Stay for hours. Well, somehow they sold it in. So they.
I was supposed to go right.
Good evening, the local community's vote board of education is not called order. Doctor Watson, would you please link to the public leaders?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a motherland, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who do that? That's a Wednesday, board, board 101. They were testing me. They were testing us.
Greg really likes Michigan.
I wouldn't know if it was a seven o'clock meeting, got headed down by them. The time thirty things drove me off.
Well, thank you, Doctor Watson.
The ministry flag, Doctor Watson's pledge of allegiance to the state of Michigan flag.
You were hiding it, you were hiding it on me.
Okay, we will go into our public comment for this evening. A board meeting is a meeting of school business, district business held in public. It's not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comment, but will direct the superintendent to follow with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter may ask either comments free. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and ask the presenter to be respectful of any person they comment about. Ben Moore?
Up here?
Yeah, front center.
So I just wanted to respect everyone, I wanted to come and just, I think I meant for everyone here a little devastated our bond proposal didn't pass. And I wanted to be here to support a future one. So just wanted to step forward, support everyone. I also think it's time, we have to get to our voters that voted no and ask them why. Somehow, some way, there's been enough that there's a lot of community leaders that share the opinion that we all share. We need to use our community to get to those voters that voted no and ask them why, because unfortunately they were the majority. So I'm here to help them whatever way I can. I've got a long list of community leaders that are willing to, you know, let's, sometimes we have to hold school things, right? We have to pivot and adapt. And I think hindsight's 2020, there's something we wish we would have done during the campaign to do that. Marketing, for example, but let's not be negative, let's use our community and do our work now. There's nothing that would make me happier than explaining to the community why we need 120 million dollars for a new school versus 44 for a retrofit. And I'm not saying that that's where we should be headed, but that is my belief. I think we live in a time where jobs aren't necessarily driving people to where they live. People work from home now, that's a new trend. We live in an automotive state. Ford, GM, and Chrysler, all those people that were planted in an office three years ago, they're planted at home now. So they get to choose where they live. If it's not a job, what's the next driver? It's the school district. So let's, we have to do this for our kids. I've got an eight-year-old in third grade at Pearl, and I've got two and a half-year-old twins that I totally intend on sending to the school district. We have to get this done. And I have to get this done for my kids, and we have to do it as our community needs it. So I'm here to support. Most of you have my phone number, call me. I've got a long list of people that'll help.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment, so I will turn it over to you Superintendent Warren to begin the discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. In response to a number of our community members that have spoken to following the most recent defeat in the peer community school that relates to the bond. You know, we've taken a long, hard look from a leadership team perspective. I think it's always, you know, I think it's always just good practice, right? Good practice to evaluate what you have control over. Right? There are certain things we don't have control in the community. My college football coach used to say, "Control the controllables." Right? So there's a certain segment of the population that I think is pretty hardened in their opposition to the schools. That has been absolutely reinforced, not just in recent history, but in decades worth of failed bond proposals in peer schools. Okay, so that is a fact, a factor in a very important aspect of the problem. Very similar to what you heard just recently in public comment, but we have a segment of the population that is imploring the district to forge ahead. Despite our devastation, our frustration, we don't have the luxury of putting our head down and crying, you know, sad, terrible. This is the leadership group of this school, this community school district. And we need to use that devastation and frustration as fuel to get this thing across the finish line. Here are some really good things that mean nothing. The almost 5,700 votes that were cast in favor of this bond proposal represent the largest number of yes votes ever cast in the history of peer community schools at a time when our district is probably at its smallest in terms of student and parent population. That's remarkable, right? So 5,700 of our fellow community members said, "This looks like the right thing to do for me." 570 more folks said, "It's not." That's a fact. Our turnout amongst our parent community, we think, when we come back and do kind of the post-op, is going to be significant. So the message to our staff and our people, our parents, I think, got out there. I do think there was some confusion in the community not as happy in schools as to what their vote meant. So we're going to have to write that law if we decide to move forward. So what we did as a leadership team is what we always do for the board, is to present you with options. Okay, so what are the options? We have identified 44 million dollars worth of what we would characterize as necessities. But like any bond proposal with multiple line items, we can very easily prioritize those from one to whatever the last one is. We would argue, the leadership team and I would argue, that the security measures that we identify that are efficient in our buildings are going to be at the top of the list. So if not moving forward with another bond proposal or identifying some other funding mechanism, we've identified security gaps in our district that we are obligated to fund. That money is going to come from the general fund. And so we have been working diligently to figure out, okay, how do we begin to move and shift and change priorities in the district to shore up some of those security weaknesses of the debt fund? Well, contrary to popular opinion, there's one pot of money. Okay, one pot of money that pays for salaries, one pot of money that pays for technology, one pot of money that pays for fuel that goes into the buses, and the paper that goes into the coffee machines. So anytime you tax the general fund with additional strain, with items that you had not previously identified, something else suffers as a result. The reason why public school districts utilize this method to fund infrastructure improvement is so not to tax the general fund and keep that money safeguarded for instruction. How do we know where the peer school stands as it relates to sound financial management? Well, we get a third-party audit every year. I've been the superintendent in 12 years here. We have never received anything less than a perfect audit of our plant Moran third-party auditors, never not once. So what is that audit? It audits our accounting practices, the variables in which we do our forecasting, what we budget for, passing and approving balanced budgets, putting money into our fund balance or our savings account, which we've done now for six consecutive years, Mark?
Yes.
Okay, as a declining enrollment district, it's remarkable. So districts, we've also done comparative studies, our neighbors, our peers in the state. The amount of bonded dollars they have achieved in that same, let's say, 50-year period that we've been investigating with peer election history is in the hundreds of millions of dollars to build new schools, to renovate old facilities, to purchase buses, to do the things that they, infrastructurally, roof replacement, sidewalk replacement, paving, parking lots, all those things. To hear from the community that, well, if the district simply managed its money better, we would somehow have freed up 44 million dollars worth of capital monies to address those problems is so ridiculously a field from what reality is in how public school districts are funded. Now, we can talk all we want, our community members, our friends and neighbors, about the problematic funding structure in the state of Michigan. I'm all ears, I'd love to have that conversation with you. But this body can't change that. We operate within the parameters that we are the rules of the game for this state. Besides our auditor for Plant Moran, the state of Michigan, the Department of Ed produces a document every year called Bulletin 1014. It's public information. That document compares how districts across the state spend their money, what percentage of their budgets go towards the different variables in our budget. This is a $50 million corporation, folks. Over 1,000 line items in the budget. Bulletin 14 has said consistently that we are in the top 25% of districts in the state of Michigan. And we're talking about 500-plus entities here for monies proportioned to our budget that goes into construction. Meaning, the top quarter percent, that most of our money goes where it needs to go in the classroom. We're the bottom 10% on expenditures towards administration and operations in the entire state. So we hear things like voter administration, top-heavy irresponsible spending, mismanagement. I got two third-party entities that say that just ain't true. Perhaps we need to do a better job telling that story. We can do that, right? That's on us, that's on us, okay? It's frustrating because sometimes we look at that and say, "I'm not sure what more we can do with the social media and direct mailers home and accounting press articles." But that remains, maybe we gotta start knocking on some doors. Gotta start knocking on some doors, okay? So the options are this. The options are, we have the ability to place this identical, somewhat semi-identical language on the ballot in November and ask for essentially the same thing in the morning. Mark's going to share with you in a moment the details of both that and that. That's optional one. Option two, scrap it and say, "Okay, of those 44 million dollars that we had asked the community to support through a bond, we can identify, let's say, 10, 12 million of our highest priority items and figure out over the course of the next three to five fiscal years, how we squirrel away enough money to deal with those high priority items." Those are your two options. How do we think, how do we have to operate as a leadership team? And I've been here 12 years, I've asked the community for money twice. Two times in my tenure. What have we done every other time we needed to do something? We've made the tough choices, right? Previous board decided to merge the high schools. Not necessarily a popular thing in this community. Heard of it in the first board meeting 12 years ago. Gentleman sitting in the back stood up and said, "We either want to close one of the high schools." It's never going to happen here. And I responded at the time with, "Well, I don't know, the numbers say, I'll get into it in the back." Six months later, I said, "We gotta close a high school." Okay, closed three other buildings. Employees have taken pay cuts. I've cut the staff in this building, the administration building by 40%. We have cut and cut and cut. We needed a new athletic complex, so what did we do? Fund raised $3 million to do it, went to groups at the optimists and said, "Give us money." Created an academic and athletic foundation, the leader fund, to pay the bill back. So I'm not necessarily interested in hearing, "We haven't tightened our belts and what we needed to do to improve, bring new programs." How many robotics teams were here 12 years ago, Tim?
No, no.
Yeah, one. How many we got now?
Several.
Between elementary?
Several.
Right? We got an early college program, we got a homeschool partnership, we got virtual programming. We have more AP classes than anyone, we have more AP classes offered at our high school than our entire county competitors combined. We got our own PLW, PLW pre-engineering program, Rice-Popey High School. We have state-of-the-art athletic facilities that are the envy of everyone in our region. We're hosting state quarterfinal, regional track meets band festivals, we're bringing lots of business into the peer. We're doing our part, we're doing our part. Finally, before I go over to Mark to talk about the options that we would like the board to consider this evening, one final thought. The pain point that we are going to experience without these funds, if the community thought that portable classrooms out in front of east and west was an embarrassment to the district and community, which I've only heard that going on 30 years now, that, that will seem like Disney World. We have facilities that simply cannot stand without repair. And I'm not talking about an elementary school like Seaton in the far corner of the district. I'm talking about buildings that are front and center to our instructional program, CFI. Will have to be boarded up in the center of town. Maple Grove, Mayfield, I don't know what the long-term viability of these facilities are without the necessary funds. Programs are going to suffer because I need the buildings to run the programs that we're now offering. These are important programs that have now been embedded in our district. So we're going to have to be honest with the community about that as well. So three, three points of honesty for me. Have we done it better? Yep, I'm willing to listen and hear what we can do better in the campaign. Number two, we got a great story to tell about what this district has accomplished in the last 12 years. I'm going to probably tell it over the next few months. And number three, if we don't get the money, there is going to be a price to pay for that. Because the time to say we can simply tighten our belts, pull up our sleeve, roll up our sleeves and get it done, those days are hard to remember. So now we're talking about buildings that are 50, 55, 60, 70 years old. That just can no longer function. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Raider, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations, to talk about what our recommendation for the board will be.
COVID funds, I think we've heard a lot about COVID money. And I think that we need to hear some actual, like, it's grant funds. I know I've done a phenomenal job, but that is very restricted, and I think that's really.
So any sort of, for Mark, when you talk about money that will be categorized as either categorical funds that come from the state or federal grant money, those monies come with significant strings attached and restrictions. Meaning that the monies are earmarked for specific things. For example, between S1, 2, and 3, these are three separate buckets, each with three sets of rules and limitations. For example, we had to direct certain percentages of those federal monies into, to address the issue of learning loss. So as the state and the nation realize, we can't have millions of students at home online and expect to get the same results that they got in a classroom face-to-face with a teacher. I think everyone pretty much understands that, right? If you lived through that as a parent, you knew that even the most dedicated, self-motivated, driven young person struggled in that environment. And I had high school kids at the time. I can't imagine having an elementary-age kid online six and a half hours a day. We did our best, but the feds did, I think, identify a real problem in our country and say, "Hey, local school districts, if you need to hire tutors after school, if you need to have more summer school programs, if you need to have specialized reading programs to help kids that didn't get what they needed during the COVID years, this is what this money is for." So for folks looking at that money saying, "Well, you got, well, in our case, 20% is the rule, excess 1.6 million." So this, right off the top of our roughly 8 million, the three pots, has to address that. You spend that any else, you don't have to pay back the state.
And they have to prove what you're planning.
Absolutely. Everything has to be approved. And audited, and audited. So the state doesn't give you a blank check and say, "Here's 4 million, here's 8 million, here's 50 million. Good luck, go get them." Okay, that doesn't happen. Secondly, anyone, anyone that takes the time to investigate, and this is where I'm going to get a little, look at what building costs are now. You think 44 million dollars is a lot of money when you're talking about nine-plus buildings. How many 1.5 million square feet? Just go anywhere and just do a monicum, a minimal amount of research to see what those costs are related to. 44 million dollars divided by what we're, doesn't get you very far, folks. There were things left out of what we submitted to you for your approval that we've already decided we have to take out of the general fund. Because I couldn't afford to put bathroom renovations at an elementary school in there at the cost. Now, it doesn't mean that that bathroom that hasn't been renovated in 30 years doesn't smell like urine, doesn't have broken pipes, and is in constant, constant need of repair. Because also what's public is all of our bills. I would love to share with the community what we pay a month in basic plumbing repair costs. These are things that our folks are not necessarily trained or certified to do. They're, name me a district that has a master plumber on staff, that we've got to farm that work out. It is hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to fix broken pipes and plumbing with 5,000 people using the restroom facilities every day. Elementary kids use it more than once. There's not a person in our communities in their own, own homeownership. If I looked to you Lisa and said, "Lisa, you're spending $1,000 a month on plumbing repair," would not take you long to say, "I probably need to invest some money into solving the problem and fixing it at its source before I keep slapping a baguette at it for the 2 to 12 grand a year."
But I think the most important thing is that with construction or operations, a fixed income, anybody can understand a fixed income.
Yep.
And I think that's the choice right there. Do you spend it on repairs or do you spend it on renovations? I mean, that's, that's the choice in there.
You guys approve the budget every year, right?
Right.
So on the part where Mark has slated money away into the operations category, right? What percentage of our budget does that take? Well, roughly 80% goes to wages and benefits. It's a service-based industry, we have, we pay people. So let's say at most, 20% of that budget is dedicated to pay for everything else. Gas in the buses, all the repairs, all the utilities, all the products, the stuff, the books, the iPads, the stuff. So when fuel costs double, triple, right? When all these repairs happen, we do a pretty good job estimating what those costs are every year, we just do. Our auditors bear that out. We hear it every year, don't we? Every year, Plant Moran stands right there and says, "You guys do an amazing job of forecasting, of budgeting, of self-auditing. Your accounting practices are sound." This is the second-largest employer in the entire county, and our books could not be better.
Well, how many years have we went where we did a budget and then it saved us back? Like we use a income economy market, how many times have we did a budget in the state where, oh, sorry, we don't have that, we need a little time.
A year operation happened in the early 2000s and that post-2008. So with that, Mark, take it away, thanks Lisa.
So before I get into the sheets that I just gave you, as recommendation on the agenda tonight is another ballot proposal for the November 22 electoral. It is essentially, that's exactly the same, we'll get into a few of the minor details. It is 44,840,000 dollars. The only major difference is instead of being qualified bonds from treasury, they're not qualified. And I'll get into that detail here in a second. The list has been published, we've shared, building by building, item by item, exactly the same. The valid amount passed me, exactly the same. The amount of mills required to pay the debt in the beginning and over the life of the bonds, the same, 2.65 miles. Not in.
Which is .10 less than what we currently love. This is not a no-tax increase bond, this is a decrease tax bond.
Why this is fast and furious is the election was August 2nd. By August 16th, we have to have our new ballot to the clerk. One hiccup, or I'm going to circle back now to qualified bonds, is treasury, who approves qualified bonds, requires a minimum 30-day term. They make no exceptions, we try, zero exceptions. Does it make a difference? Not really. What all five bonds were really set up for was for districts who don't have the Pontiacs, the Dunn Harbors, the very bottom 5% of the districts in the state who don't have good credit rating so they could use the credit rating of the state. So when they go to the market and sell their bonds, they're not paying exorbitant interest to get a buyer to buy what we perceive as junk bonds and are very risky bonds. The real reason the school bond loan fund was created was for communities where you hit the seven debt mill limit. So there's a debt mill limit, seven mils. And if your community's property values, I know a few districts down in the suburban area that created a recession who were in opposition for hundreds of millions of bonds, could not let you because they were up against the seven debt mill. You can go to the school bond loan fund when you're qualified and have the state pay the principal. You still owe the interest, but they'll pay the principal payments until your debt and property values can generate enough to start paying that back. They changed those rules a couple of years ago because there was a few districts across the state who were abusing that. And rightfully so changing. Do I ever think that the property values, our current debt right now is about 33 and a half million dollars, existing debt. We had those two, it would be at 55. We have a maximum of 110 million total debt based on the taxable value of the county. We would have to lose more than 50% of the taxable value to ever exceed seven mils. The state of demand, when we were doing our planning last Wednesday. And the state of demand, when we were doing our planning last Wednesday, the after, if that happens, the least of our worries in society is gonna be about the pension. So I don't think that's a worry. Now, how do we insulate or insure ourselves? Well, there's a mechanism, and you'll see it in these numbers, I'll give you the overview before we get lost in the detail here. It's basically, we go out and we can, with non qualified, we can buy an insurance policy that basically lies us up to the state's double A plus rate. So then we go to the market and sell, we will get the same as if we went to a qualified bonds. Yes, it takes a little bit of the proceeds out of the total bond, but it essentially still is a mechanism that is out there that allows districts to do that. One, because of the timing, and two, by choice. If you don't think you're ever going to run in seven debt mill, you don't necessarily need to go do everything qualified. And districts choose that all the time. So it's not like we're choosing something that's aimed to the circle that everyone, ninety-nine percent, be qualified. This is, districts choose this all the time. So that's what we put before it. What you see here is all the detail that comes from the financial advisors. So the page you want you to go to is the third page, it looks like this. Lands here. And if you look at the top, that's kinda where the detail is. So you see the amount, forty-four, eight forty, what they're looking to ask for. You see what the interest and that would be, what is the estimate today? Does anyone know what's going on out there? Yep, we got the feds keep raising inflation, so right now it's at four and a half percent. We don't believe that to be four and a half percent of the sold bonds out in early twenty-four. It'd probably be right now, based on today, probably in the three, five to four. So these schedules are done, worst case scenario, why? Because we don't wanna have to come back and say we need eleven more mills after we do a calculation. If you look down the far right hand side of this page, you see mills needed to, uh, deal with unqualified debt. You see how it starts at two, six, five, and it goes down over the remaining years up to twenty forty-six, and it's declining. You kinda look at the left hand side, you see the current existing debt of the thirty-three, thirty-four million. It is beat off by thirty-seven. You go back over the right hand side, you see that mill is starting to drop off, principally after that because then the only existing debt is the remainder of the school fund debt. The way we've structured it is a lot of principal in later years and little principal in earlier years and more interest throughout. So the numbers look almost the same, there's just a few minor details. Like I said, capitalized interest because we are winter only, so what's capitalized interest? We're winter only tax levy. So if we go electric in November, they pass it. We were already told the local assessors, eighty-three point six five mills, we gotta do that by September thirtieth, long before the election. And so we will have a May, we sell in February, we could have a May in November. But more than likely, depending on the date you sell, most payments get deferred until after your first tax, um, levy, which will be not until twenty-three actually. So it's a lot of financial detail that's out there, but you go to the next page, you'll see the details that I was just referring to, that's now the portrait page. And at the top, you can see the left hand side is bond issuance costs, those are standard costs. Those are, don't be shocked by that, on discount. The attorney fees, the financial consultant, all that is important to get these to the markets and sold to institutional investors. On the right hand side, you see that there is a bond insurance. And so you see two hundred two thousand for bond insurance. So on forty-five million, two hundred two thousand for bond insurance is not a huge price to not do qualified bonds and go out and wait thirty days, which means we missed the November election, we have to wait until next May. We'd be the earliest that we can go back if we don't get this November. So we made conscious choice to recommend doing unqualified bonds, move forward, try to get them back, and see if we can get this thing passing. That's it without any too technical, you know, those technical questions.
Keep in mind that this analysis by PFM is also supported by our legal counsel, right? As that is Mark's opinion, right? So the financials are put together by PFM. Our attorney, Mr. Crowley, works in concert with both PFM, Mark himself, to talk about, you know, pros, cons, benefits, negatives, and, you know, all, all three of them are in support of this. Kudos to Mark and his team because this was an absolutely incredible, incredible lift in a very, very short period of time. Quite honestly, I don't think any of us anticipated that this would pass. And perhaps that's on us.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All the hard work.
I yield back to you, I'll slow my time back a little bit.
Thank you. We will go to our action items. With our action items, there's still some discussion left. I will, um, on the action item, we have our call to the election. So I will go ahead and read the language. Whereas the school district is contemplating undertaking various capital improvements to facilities within the school districts, which include remodeling, equipping, reequipping, finishing, refurbishing school buildings, playgrounds, and other facilities, erecting, including classrooms, and multipurpose room additions to school buildings. Acquiring and installing instructional technology, infrastructure, and equipment in school buildings and other facilities, and preparing, evolving, and improving site at school buildings, playgrounds, and other facilities, including parking lot improvements, and the purchase of school buses collectively to projects. And whereas the school district is of the opinion that in order to finance projects, a bonding proposition should be submitted to the electors on, or at the general school election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. And whereas the school district is a Michigan general powers school district operating under the revised school code as amended, and as such, the school districts' election are governed by the Michigan Election Law Act one sixteen, Public Act of Michigan nineteen fifty-four as amended, the Michigan Election Law. And whereas the school district desires to submit a bonding proposition to the electors at the general school election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two, which election will be conducted by the school's district election coordinator, the clerk of the county of Leupier. And whereas Michigan Election Law requires the school district certify the ballot language for any proposals to be submitted for voters' approval at an allowable election date to the school district's election coordinator, not later than four P M. on the twelfth Tuesday before the election date. And whereas the school district desires to approve the above referenced bonding proposition to authorize the superintendent or his designate to certify the bonding proposition to the school district's election coordinator. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Education of the Leupier Community School, County of Leupier, Michigan, that the school improvement bond proposal attached, chair two, as exhibit A, is hereby approved and shall be submitted to the electors at the general school election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. The superintendent and his designate are authorized to certify the above referenced proposal to the school district's election coordinator, the clerk of the county of Leupier, on or before four P M. on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, which is not later than the twelfth Tuesday before the general school election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. The superintendent or his designate are further authorized to take any and all action required under Michigan Election Law with regard to the general school election to be held on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. All resolutions and part of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution are hereby settled. Doesn't happen. Okay.
I'll make a motion that the resolution approving bond proposition to be voted on at a special school election will be approved as a type.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and we support it. Any discussion on this motion?
Well, I guess I'll go first. The big thing for me going forward is we've gotta market this different. The, I, strictly my opinion, having knocked on roughly thirteen or over thirteen hundred doors I can study, the no tax increase on our signs was confusing the average voter. Um, most of them said, why are you guys advocating for a no vote? So we've gotta market this different.
Yeah, if you see those signs, take them down. You have my permission.
Now, whether that's, you know, we market as school improvements, save our students, save our schools, however we wanna market, we've gotta market it different. That's my, strictly my two sentences as a board member.
I think what was most important to me was when Chris said, we need to develop and see the self ability for ourselves. And so I'm still gonna stand on the fact that I believe we should invite the community into this. And we're doing an athletic day, why can't we go, community, come see? Each one of us could be at various buildings and, um, see her out, gladly stay in the building all day on Saturday if I need to, and say, come in and see these facilities because they are burning and finish your southern power. So I, I just really hope that we can make that happen and get the community out. And while it's hard to get them out, we'll get to, we try, maybe they'll come out and see what they're talking about.
I agree with Brad as far as the marketing issue. I had overwhelming amounts of people contacting me and go, what does this no mean on this sign? And even after explaining, I'm like, to just no end, that we are not able to put votes on the sign. That due to rules that we choose to follow, I don't know if any other school district follows their rules, but campaign finance laws dictate what we can and cannot put on those signs. And I explained that to at least a hundred different people, at least minimum. April, what are you talking about? Why does it say no? I have the answer memorized, and it still didn't resonate because they still were confused. And I am not by any means slamming our marketing team because I believe Jared did the absolute best that he could with sharing the pamphlets that went home, the Facebook pages, the emails, the texts, the daily, oh, let's profile this driveway, why this looks like the side of the moon, why this, why Schickler Drive looks like a bomb went off. I mean, he profiled every single need for the improvements that we desperately need. So I hope to God Jared, wherever you go, this is not in any indication. And I had many conversations with Jared over this. Jared, what am I supposed to tell him?
Left record of black people hates Jared.
I do not. I love Jared. I had many conversations with Jared. Jared, please help me try to understand and get through so people can understand why. And he always kept, April, so finance, things that we can't. And so I agree with Brad, and I know, I think we are all in unanimous support that we have to have something else on those signs in order to promote this passing. It has to.
I'm just gonna put the district local on this. Who's the local?
I like space.
No. You wanna see seven thousand no votes?
I think we need to get the kids involved. My daughter, Vi, was devastated because she understands, she's now in high school. She had to do the transfer bus back and forth, from ninth grade back and forth. It was, it wasn't a disruption to her day at school, but it was different. And there was talk about having the kids do a parade. But the thing is, the kids that do a parade, who's gonna show up? The people that voted yes. So she wanted to reach out and say that we need to get the kids involved, whether it's, I don't know if it's kids on commanders. I don't know if it's kids standing on the sidewalk at Whitey. I don't know if it's at the field day coming up on Saturday, that the kids are, I wish their t-shirts said, please vote yes because we only have time to get that to happen for Saturday. But I think that that's the thing too, because we can talk as adults all day long to each other. I've spoken, everybody I spoke to in the Leupier County voted yes. That's what I have to say. Well, there are five thousand, however many, that didn't vote yes, but everybody that has talked to me has voted yes. So I think that children need to speak up too and be out there and talking because this is about them. It's not about the adults. Yeah, it's about us, but it's our kids going to school every single day. So I think we need to somehow incorporate them.
I was just getting ready to speak up, we got a Leupier Day's parade. You gotta bring most to the parade, and you can be an entry in the parade, and you can have as many people as you want. Yes, Sherri's listening, so she does the parade, so. Uh, Ben, Ben, people get a little upset though if I bring those too long.
Uh, we've got competing interests here. Yeah, that might recent couple comments, I wasn't that supportive of the bond.
I was on the phone with a friend, um, business owner, member of the community forever, um, earlier, and, uh, he and I agreed, but we need to figure out how to, A, ask the tough questions to the people who voted no. What was the reason was their no vote? And if their no vote was because they're upset with the super, or they're upset with the board, or a board member, or they're upset with something else, like, come and talk to us about that. But all you did was punish every single kid in this community for one stupid thing. So fix the schools, complain to us about me, complain to us about the board, complain to me about Matt or a teacher or whoever it might be, but you don't punish the kids to do it. That didn't solve anything. All it did is, you know, if you go back with every, every bond that we've passed, or tried to pass, I should say, right? We've had a different board, had a different super, had a different board, different super, different bond, different board, different bond, different super, right? Fail, 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 it's the same thing, same outcome. So what's the same? It's the people voting. So you can change us a thousand times over, the people out there have to decide that they're here for the kids. And they're here to keep the school in this community, which feeds the businesses, the kids, the seniors that just passed their village, guess who's gonna help take care of them? These kids coming out of the schools. So that's what needs to happen, that's what people need to realize. I don't care if they want my head on the block, they can have it. Why hurt the kids for it? So that's what needs to change, that's what needs to go out. We need to figure out how to ask those questions and take the answers and listen to them and see what it is. But I really don't think it's putting one of our heads on the block is gonna make five thousand people vote yes or fifty-eight more people say yes. So whatever it is that we have to do, this time it will be done. Because we're gonna pass this in November.
If the community is gonna want to survive, it's not the businesses that are bringing, bringing the families to us. It's the community schools. People are gonna wanna go to the community, uh, because of the schools, because the businesses aren't here, right? The Ford and the G M. are all working from home. A lot of your engineering things that need to work, they get moved back and forth. So now, I hope we just plead to these people that they understand that this is what strives the people to come to our community. Is they wanna have somewhere for their kids to go. Yeah, my kids are grown, my kids are graduating. My grandkids maybe someday might go to these schools. I, I'm not sure if my kids will still be around Leupier or not, but if so, I want a nice school for them to go to. It's hard to see the schools, uh, not for the, not for reasons that we didn't try and keep them up, right? It's just, they're old, they're worn out. I fight with that nonstop and healthcare, right? I'm facilities director, I fight with that nonstop because, again, we keep getting less and less of money.
we keep getting less and less more money. Things cost more and more and more money to get done. I had a project that was going to go at forty-five million dollars, now it's seventy-nine million dollars for the same project. So I do get the cost and the longer we take to get this stuff done, the longer the, the less and less it's going to pay for it as time goes on, right?
So even these three months are going to cost us money because that forty-four million dollars, most of the projects related to that three, six month period, it's going to cost more.
Well, and to add to it, long before Lisa meeting in two thousand sixteen, I don't know if you both remember this, we had a four-hour finance and operations committee meeting when we, at the time it was Gary Oyster, Hank Coach and I, we debated if we were going to pay to fix the boilers at Mayfield or if we were going to clean Rowan Warner every other day. Because that was, that was our options. Were we going to clean Rowan Warner in summer every other day or were we going to fix the boilers at Mayfield? That's the discussions that the board would have to go back to having. I don't know about you guys, but I kind of enjoy having a half-hour finance and operations committee. Here's doom and gloom, here's the positive, and usually it ends up being positive the last few years.
I would rather have discussions about what other things can we implement for our kids to experience than what are we going to have to take away from all of our kids because we have two roofs that our kids are in so they don't collapse during the weather.
And you know, Maple Grove, C M H. is going to be leaving Maple Grove, they're, they're entering in discussions by the Old Nowood Clinic. There's money that we're losing right there too.
The one thing Brad, and I knew I, that's a really good analogy in that finance and ops committee. It'd be one thing if this district didn't make the harder decisions, right? Imagine if East and West were still open right now. You'd have high schools with seven hundred kids in them. Built each fifteen hundred completely inefficient. And we closed Seaton, it was half full, half the classrooms were empty. Right, so if we were sitting back unwilling to make the tough decisions when we were wasting money on facilities that were half full and you're sitting in the community thinking, wait a second, you're sitting in this finance and ops committee telling me you, you can't figure out how to fix a boiler or clean a school? Why don't you close one of your schools that are sitting half empty? But we did all that. We did all that before it was popular, right? And we're still having those discussions.
Unfortunately, there's a lack of understanding of school tidiness. I mean, that really is what it boils down to because people don't understand that your hands are tied, the grant funds are only used on certain areas. And it's kind of like you're done on a house with a budget and you have to spend it on things that are important. And the state scrutinizes that, that you want to spend it on destruction. It's a choice and we can't just go put a four million dollar roof on East or Lookout High School because we can't save that kind of money either from our budget because we have to spend on destruction. So the only way we can do it is buy it. And that's all.
Our sign should say vote for the kids.
I want to add an important point that a public speaker made. When we started this challenge back in two thousand seventeen, we used independent folks to put the pins in the paper to tell us what we need to do over a five, a ten, a fifteen, twenty-year period. That was a hundred and twenty-five million dollar price tag. That hasn't changed since those numbers were codified in two thousand eighteen that led to two thousand nineteen bond. And as Tim and Matt both said, we've lost count. Probably if we did that study today, it's probably two hundred million dollars. We're asking for forty-five million, under forty-five million. We are dealing with the short term, the five to ten year stuff. There still will be issues to be dealt with and that can't be lost, but we've got to start dealing with some of this infrastructure. I had a water main, the sewer break-in at Rowan Warner, thirty thousand dollars repairs, Matt said earlier. That's not something our folks can do, you need heavy construction equipment, you need certified, you know, folks who know and can meet the legal mandates. We had a water main break at C F I, another twenty thousand dollar dig and repair in February. Fifty, sixty old buildings don't withstand the Michigan weather, the corrosion of the water, et cetera. We need to remember, we need to get going on this because the longer wait, the higher the price tag is going to be at some point. But I was glad to speak about the hundred and twenty-five million threshold, that hasn't changed.
Annual levy two point six five mils, which is the largest school district in the county, is still by far the smallest levy of all five school districts in this county. That's remarkable.
I personally would like to ask for more. I wish we'd be asking for another school bond to build another school, I mean.
But we've heard in a lot of groups, but that's not quite what the community wants. So we really, this is bare minimum bonds that we need to do for our kids in these buildings. So we don't have to make those hard decisions. Any other discussions? Mrs. McKenna.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Dr. Watson.
Absolutely.
Mr. Wilton.
Yes.
Mrs. LeBar.
Aye.
Dr. Novak.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler says aye. Motion carries. Okay, we will move into board number communications. Anything else tonight?
We said last week we weren't going to give up. I know I did, I ran my mouth for a good action a couple minutes.
What?
That was the platform I ran on when I voted, when I wanted this spot for kids. I believe that what we just just did tonight reinforces that same message that we are here for the kids, that is why we are here, they deserve this, our community, whether they think that you are not, they need this because they need us to help make this community even better. The school is the essential part of a community and I believe that we can do it. I'll keep trying.
Again, you never been bashful, Daniel.
I used to be shy, I swear.
But I'm not sure how these degrees are paid from zero to free, but I mean, we're here for volunteers. So we're only doing this because we love this community. It's not for anything else.
I just ask you to think about the kids, everybody that's out there, it's not about anything else other than the kids that are there. Put everything else aside, walk into a building, walk into C F I, walk into Lookout High School, walk into any of them and just looking awe of what really truly, truly needs to be done and thinking that we're your children and you don't have kids, that I understand you can learn in any environment, hundred percent. I've learned in every environment everywhere, but I would like my children, my child, my last child to enjoy her last three years at the schools, having things around her that she is proud to go into a school. That's all I ask. Yes. Cylinders are leaning.
Not for a lack of trying to keep them from me.
But they can't handle so much.
I'll just speak up for about the Lookout Days, Lookout Days is next week. Hopefully everybody comes, have a great time again if we want to get, you know, Lookout Community Schools into the parade, we can do so quickly. Sherry will be in contact at this point, but come in, walk the parade. Pass out some literature, that kind of thing if you'd like, but come in and enjoy the festival. It's all about hometown. Michigan's largest spring festival, there you go.
I just want to, we really would appreciate everyone's support, like Paul said, it's for the kids. Everything that we do here, every volunteer hour we put in is for these kids. We want to spend our money that is in our general fund on the kids and not on our buildings. So truly, truly, we're just asking everybody's support to really take a comprehensive review of the bond language that we've put out and we're just asking you to support us.
Thank you, ma'am president. I would say a coach said that a win isn't, doesn't make you as good as you think it does and a loss doesn't make you bad as you think it does, okay? A win isn't a mandate, do whatever you want, a loss isn't handled well. Alright, so putting things into that perspective, go back to my original point. For all the criticisms which are, which we will take, this campaign yielded more yes votes than anything else in the history of this district. We have a certain amount of pride in that, okay? I really appreciate what Craig said and I can't deny having a very similar sentiment in my frustration with where our community happens to be at on this issue. That being said, everything that was indicated as a way to improve the campaign, I think is valid, I really do. You know, I know I go back to a lot of athletic examples, but I think athletics in the taste life in a lot of ways. Bad coach in the locker room after a loss blames the players, blames the referees or the officials, blames the playing surface, blames the weather conditions. Great coach, first thing they say is, I must have done something wrong unless we can get you guys or you gals prepared for this game. So that's on me, that's on me, hundred percent. The following I want to say is that if, if there is a sentiment out there like Craig articulated that that this vote is somehow against me personally as a superintendent or this board as a general body, I can say how personally disconcerting that is given the fact that I, I feel like I've dedicated the last eleven plus years and given a great deal to the, to the community and the district. But I can also say that I know every decision that I've made or how people may personally feel about me can, can impact your vote and that, that it bothers me that people's perception of me would somehow prevent them from supporting something so important for kids. And if I have done something to offend a certain portion of the community or a decision that was made, something that you can't live with, you know, I offer whatever level of responsibility that I have in that and humbly ask that for this particular decision that we have to make, that you can somehow look past that. Vote yes and then go right back to that life you made. That is fine. I think good quality discourse, discord, what is what makes a healthy organization, what makes a healthy community. I've never been immune to criticism, I always listen to everyone. And I would be stupid if I sat here and said, well, you're all crazy, you did it perfectly and the chips just didn't fall on the right side of the, of, of the ledger. We have to own this, that's what leaders do. We are all leaders and I, I appreciate the board's willingness to go through this again. I'm not going to lie to you, I am not looking forward to this. I don't take losing well, I'm sick of losing. I'm sick of losing and going into those classrooms and going into those facilities and having to look at those kids and act like we're doing everything we can for them. Because every one of us has had our educational experiences, those days are over, this is not about us. This is not about one adult sitting at this table, we don't get anything from this. We had our experiences, good or bad, our staff had their experiences, good or bad. Every adult in this, this school district committed to a life of service and a job of service for the kids that walk in those doors every day. This is not a traditional punch the clock nine to five jam, this is a profession, this is a calling. This is a job and a life of sacrifice and a life of commitment and a life of humility and one of looking past what's best for you. There are many people in this organization that make money doing something else, make more money doing something else, go someplace else, have chosen a job with greater prestige, more power. But they didn't, they're here. And these people, our staff, this board, our leadership team is not looking to build fat cushy offices here at A S C with bottom line. Do you know how much money is going into A S C? How much money is going into A S C? Zero dollars. Debbie Thompson was the superintendent of this district for six years before me, this is my twelfth year. The same plants that were in that office with Debbie are still almost dying in my office today. I believe, and Mark Meister told me this, that I'm sitting at Mr. Schickler's desk. That's a fact, walk into my office, the desk is seventy years old. I think I got pictures of Debbie's family still on my desk. More comments, all I have to say, thank you.
Most of you are here in support.
Mrs. McKenna. Dr. Watson.
Aye.
Mr. Wilton.
Aye.
Mrs. LeBar.
Aye.
Dr. Novak.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler says aye.